Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled City Council meeting. Call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. Time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Bearboo?
Present.
Freelyb?
Here.
Paulson?
Present.
Beyondich?
Johnson?
Here.
Santelli is absent. Cuffey?
Present. We have a quorum. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item 3.1, which is we have a public hearing scheduled today for the special levy for the Virginia Economic Development Authority. So we will recess the City Council meeting. At the time is 5:32 PM, and we will begin the public hearing. We'll call the public hearing to order. This is the public hearing regarding the Vida levy. We do have a resolution in our hand, and the notice of the public hearing is as follows. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Virginia, Minnesota, will meet at approximately 5:30 PM on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, at City Hall, 327 First Street South, Virginia, Minnesota, to conduct a public hearing regarding a proposed levy for the benefit of the Virginia Economic Development Authority under Minnesota Statute Section 469.107 in the amount equal to lesser of a levy at the rate of 0.01813% of taxable market value in the city, or $69,366, with respect to taxes payable in calendar year 2022, subject to the requirements provided in this notice. If after the public hearing the council authorizes the proposed increase, the resolution authorizing such an increase shall be published in the official newspaper of the city. If a petition requesting a referendum on such a resolution, signed by voters equalling 5% of the votes cast in the last general election, is filed with the city clerk within 30 days of publication of the resolution, the resolution shall not be effective. Any person wishing to express an opinion on the matter to be considered at the public hearing will be heard orally or in writing dated August 31st, 2021, by Pam Malalabean, our city clerk for the City of Virginia. Pam, have we received any written comments with respect to this notice of public hearing for the Vida levy?
No.
No written comments? And any telephone conversations or any comments by phone or any other media device?
None.
None. Okay, thank you. So the resolution in your packet is dated today, September 14th, 2021, a resolution approving a special levy for the Virginia Economic Development Authority for the taxes payable in 2022 in the amount of $69,366, resolved by the City Council of the City of Virginia that whereas pursuant to Minnesota Statute 469.090 to 469.1081 (EDA Act), the City of Virginia City created the Virginia Economic Development Authority, known as EDA, and whereas Section 469.107 subdivision 1 of the Economic Development Authority Act authorizes the city to levy a tax upon all taxable property within the city to be expended for the purposes authorized by the Economic Development Act, and whereas such an Economic Development Act levy may be in the amount not to exceed 0.01813% of taxable market value of the city, or $69,366, with respect to the taxable payable in calendar year 2022, and whereas the EDA has requested that the city levy all or such portion of the authorized levy as it deemed necessary and proper, and whereas the city has on this date held a public hearing, and we are currently doing so, regarding the proposed EDA levy following publication on a duly adopted city resolution proposing such a levy and notice of the public hearing in the official newspaper of the city. And so we will discuss the levy itself, any comments from the council, and then we'll look at adopting the resolution as is presented. Is there anybody that has any questions or comments on the levy of anybody from the City Council elected body or from staff? Just a note to the general public, there is no public attendance this evening to discuss this part of the public hearing, and unless, sir, I see you in the back, did you have any questions or comments? None? Okay, thank you. Also, Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that it's prudent to mention that the fruits of our Vida levy over the last few years are now very obvious downtown. There's a lot of matching grants that have happened, as well as a lot of not-so-obvious things with roofs being redone and windows and that kind of stuff. So I think this is the best investment we can use of taxpayer dollars to help downtown and other parts of the city come back to life, as many people are requesting. So I think we're doing our duty to move this forward. So I will make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
The Council Johnson moves to adopt the resolution approving the special levy for the Economic Development Authority for taxes payable in 2022 in the amount of $69,366 or 0.0183% of the taxable market value in the city. Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Councilor Bearboo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is passed, levy is adopted, and seeing there's no other attendance, no written or oral correspondence, no one to come forward to speak on behalf of this, we have now adopted the levy for 2022. There is no other further discussion about this, so we will close the public hearing. It is now 5:39 PM. We stand adjourned on the public hearing. Thank you. Now we'll reconvene the regular City Council meeting and move to 3.2, which is a proclamation for the City of Virginia Recovery Month 2021. And do you have a copy of that? Let me read. The City of Virginia Recovery Month 2021, this is the proclamation, whereas behavior health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas recovery from alcohol and other drug use occurs every day through a variety of recovery support resources and treatment programs, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover across the City of Virginia and across this nation, and whereas millions of people across the United States are in long-term recovery, living happy, healthy, and productive lives, and whereas the 2021 National Recovery Month theme is recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. Reminds people in recovery and those who support them that no one is alone in the journey through recovery. Everyone's journey is different, but we are all in this together, and whereas education about recovery and addiction is essential to combating the stigma of discrimination faced by people in recovery is needed by all citizens, including public health and safety officials, the workforce, older adults, and families. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, we invite all citizens in the City of Virginia to participate and remember and recall National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, Mayor Larry Cuffey, and the City Council of the City of Virginia, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the laws and ordinances of the City of Virginia, we do hereby claim the month of September 21st, 2021, as National Recovery Month in the City of Virginia, and call upon the citizens of Virginia to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, ceremonies, and support this year's Recovery Month theme, which is recovery for everyone, every person, every family, and every community. So in witness thereof, I hereon to set my hand as 14th Day of September in the year of our Lord 2021, and those independents of the United States of America, and two-thirds Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make about recovery? I think it's important. We have some, Council Johnson?
I would like to remind anybody who might be watching or listening right now that tonight until 8 o'clock in the park, there is a recovery event with food and games and live music and a lot of community resources. Apparently, the City Council was able to clear up the weather for them, so we are grateful for that. So heading out, go out there and enjoy some of the support those folks in recovery.
And thank you. We'll hope to get out of here by 8 o'clock so we can also participate as well. So, all right. Thank you, Council Johnson. So we'll move on to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. This is an opportunity for people from the general public to come and speak before the council. We have nobody on the line, is that correct, by phone? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the council this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to item five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the City of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes of 5.1A, approve the correction of the minutes of the regular meeting held on August 24th, 2021. Item 5.1B, the special meetings that were held on A, August 31st, 2021, B, September 2nd, 2021, and C, September 7th, 2021. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 21-017, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approve pay estimate number 15 to Kraus Anderson for the Euens Field redevelopment in the amount of $746,222.29. Item 5.4 is approve pay estimate number 15 to Kraus Anderson for the MECC, which is now the Iron Trail Motors Arena, in the amount of $1,894,935.44. Item 5.5, approve pay estimate number six to George Bugallison Sons for the Bailey's Lake Trail in the amount of $251,380.59. Item 5.6, approve pay estimate number seven to Casper Construction for the 2021 Street Project in the amount of $1,146,053.09. Item 5.7, approve the following transient merchant licenses for Special Food Truck Festival that will be held on Saturday, September 18th, on Chestnut Street. Item 5.7A, Catherine Orso doing business as Curbside Crepes. Item 5.7B, Dean Davich doing business as Happy Deans Eats. Item 5.7C, Trent Zanisich doing businesses as Ice Cream Truck LLC. Item 5.8, approve the following travel request for the Police Department. Item 5.8A, Troy Mealy to attend the Command and Control Class, September 9th through the 10th, 2021, in Anoka, at a cost of $448.95. Item 5.8B, Henry Trunk to attend the search warrants, September 8th, 2021, in Hermantown, at a cost of $179. Item 5.8C, Jason Picard to attend the Street Cop Trainer Program, November 7th, 2021, in Forest Lake, Minnesota, at a cost of $135. Item 5.8D, Christopher Simons to attend the Crisis Intervention Training, September 27th through the 30th, 2021, in Duluth, at a cost of $593.36. Item 5.9, approve the travel request for Fire Chief Alan Lewis to attend the Interschutzka USA, October 13th through the 17th, 2021, in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, at a cost of $171. And the final item is 5.10, approve the 2 AM liquor license for Flamers Incorporated doing business as flamers. These are the consent agenda items today, and looking for council action.
Move the approval of the consent agenda as documented.
Council Freelyb approves, moves to approve the consent agenda as documented. Is there support?
Support, Mayor.
A support by Council Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item six on the agenda, which is our appearances. There is no one scheduled to appear for the council. Once again, we offer this opportunity for anybody in the audience to come and speak. Seeing none, we move to item seven, which is unfinished business. We have one item, item 7.1, to adopt a resolution for the sale and transfer of city property located at 220 and 228 Chestnut Street. This is the second reading. And if you're all recalling for the, those who are listening at home, these are the two vacant spots right between Mans House Range Music for an exciting economic development project for the downtown.
Also move, Mayor, the resolution.
Council Bearboo moves to approve the resolution. Is there support? Support by Council Johnson to adopt the resolution for the sale and transfer of city property located at 220 and 228 Chestnut Street. This is the second reading for adoption. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Yes, Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe by council whatever vote that item seven is supposed to continue to have the hospital on there and the budget listed under unfinished business until we are complete with those two. I would ask that we keep those on as we directed several meetings ago.
Yes, thank you. We'll continue to keep them on the radar and on the list for discussion. Thank you. Item eight, 8.1, adopt a resolution for the sponsorship at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. You have information in your packet. Britt, can you provide us any additional information with respect to that?
Item 8.1 is the resolution for the, let me get to that page. It's a very long packet, 130-some pages this time. A lot to talk about today.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
I should have tabbed it out because it's a very, very long page. Thank you very much. It's for the US Steel sponsorship with Iron Trail Motors Event Center in the amount of $27,500 for the payment of US Steel's two separate sponsorship. The first one's in the amount of $2,500 for the US Steel name and logo placed into the ICE. The second one is for $25,000 for the naming rights to the lobby of the Iron, at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So it will be the US Steel lobby upon the entrance of the facility.
Excellent. Thank you, Britt. Looking for council action or discussion with respect to item 8.1?
Move the resolution.
Council Johnson moves to approve the resolution of the generous sponsorship, obviously, from US Steel in two separate areas, one for ICE recognition and other for lobby recognition in the amounts as previously stated by our city administrator. Is there support? Support by Council Freelyb. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. United States Steel, other community sponsor, we have many of them, and this is just another along the list, so thanks again for your support, and no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1 is the committee, the whole meeting that was held on September 7th, 2021, and we'll turn this portion of our council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Mayor, we did have one addition to the agenda. A number item, item 8.2 was a request to approve the closure of the 300 block of Chestnut Street for a building removal starting on September 21st, 2021, for up to 14 days. There was a late addition that came in.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see that in the packet. No, I didn't get the updated one, so I apologize for that. So I'm sorry. Thank you, Britt, for pointing that out. Item 8.2 moved by Council Johnson. Is there support? Support by Council Beyondich to approve the closure of the 300 block of Chestnut Street for the building removal for September 21st, 2021, for 14 days. Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, committee reports now. Thank you.
Thank you.
9.1.
9.1, committee of the whole meeting held on September 7th, 2021. Chris McMillan and Paul Christensen from People Service, Inc., who are our providers of wastewater treatment plant services, were present to discuss the contract renewal. It was moved and supported to approve the contract between the City of Virginia and People Service, Inc., as proposed, for five years, beginning January 1st, 2022, with an increase to the first year of 3.5%.
All support.
Council Johnson moves to approve the contract between the City of Virginia and People Services, supported by Council Bearboo, for a five-year period beginning January 1st, 2021. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Matt Reed, our engineer of record from S E H, was present to discuss the preliminary design and plan preparation professional services agreement for the 2023 street and infrastructure improvement project. The environmental documents that are required for the federal portion of the 2023 project are rather labor-intensive, and so it was imperative that the agreements are entered into rather soon so that he can get this work done rather quickly. It was moved and supported to approve the professional services agreement with S E H for the 2023 street and infrastructure improvement project in the amount of $24,000.
Also move, Mayor.
All support.
Moved by Council Bearboo, supported by Council Paulson to adopt the resolution approving professional services agreement with S E H for the 2023 street infrastructure program in the amount of $24,000. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve another professional services agreement with S E H for the design plans and specifications for the Silver Lake Trail Project Phase Two in the amount of $59,800, and this is a project that is being fully funded by the L C C M R grant program from the state of Minnesota.
Thank you. Move by Council Johnson. Is there support? Support by Council Beyondich to adopt the resolution approving the professional services agreement with S E H for design plans and specifications for the Silver Lake Trail Project Phase Two in the amount of $59,800, which is fully funded by the L C C M R grant. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Upon request from the Safety Committee and the Public Works Department, it was moved and supported to approve the request for the purchase of mobile lifts for the Public Works Department in the amount of $46,302, utilizing the Minnesota State bid contract All moved.
Moved by Council Beyondich. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Freelyb. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to authorize paying the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities 2022 dues in the amount of $13,977, and to pay the voluntary assessment for the Environmental Action Fund in the amount of $2,094. All moved.
Moved by Council Johnson, supported by?
Support.
Council Bearboo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to appoint team leader Eric Mo and Tom Hoard, as per the recommendation from AFSMI.
All moved. Oops, sorry.
Moved by Council Freelyb, supported by Council Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve entering into an agreement between the City of Virginia and St. Louis County for the 2022 striping program.
Also move, Mayor.
Moved to approve by Council Bearboo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the lease agreement with Virginia Hockey Association or Vaha, Virginia Area Hockey Association, for three years at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
All moved. Moved by Council Freelyb. Support by Council Johnson to approve the lease agreement with the Virginia Hockey Association, also known as Vaha, for three years at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Moved and supported to approve the sponsorship agreement with Kamatsu Mining Corporation for a 10-year sponsorship for the purchase of a Zamboni for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. All moved.
Moved by Council Johnson and supported by Council Beyondich to approve the sponsorship agreement with Kamatsu Mining Corporation for a 10-year sponsorship for the purpose of a Zamboni, for the purchase of a Zamboni for Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Once again, this is another very great community sponsorship by local business, very generous, moving forward, so it really warms our heart to make, everybody's invested in our new facilities, so this is a great opportunity. Is there support? Was there already support?
Yep.
It was moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
It was moved and supported to approve the temporary use license agreement with Rockstar Virginia LLC for a space at Uptown Virginia for the Virginia Police Department Community Outreach Center. All moved.
Moved by Council Johnson. Is there support? Support by Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? We encourage anybody who wants some services to use this community outreach. We have Lieutenant Swenson that operates this for the police department exclusively. He is our community resource officer. He's in the schools, he does the SRO, he does all those kinds of things. So if you ever have any questions or comments, you don't want to come to the city, you can't come to the police department, he's got an office in the mall, give him a call, and you know, he'll talk to whatever you want, so it's a great opportunity in conjunction with his partnership with other entities and other organizations with this community. So we, as elected body and staff, have invested in this, so we ask and we urge you to use them as a resource. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion, Council Johnson?
Mayor, I would say that there is a need for that organization to have an unmarked regular vehicle. If anybody is looking to donate or sponsor a vehicle so that when they go into the community, there's not the stigma attached with the police department, so just putting it out there that there's also a need for a vehicle for that organization, for the social workers, mental health staff, and the police department.
Yes, thank you, Council Johnson. In our last range of mental health board meeting, we discussed that very issue, so thank you. Repotted? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to receive and file the letter received by the City Council for the sale of land at 730 11th Street, North Virginia, that is a tax forfeit sale of 100,000. for the sale of land at 730 11th Street, North Virginia. That is a tax forfeit sale by St. Louis County. Was moved and supported to approve the five-year lease option for the fitness equipment from Precor for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center and to include the verbiage regarding the buyback option in the lease language.
All moved.
Moved by Counsel Freelyb. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counsel Johnson for discussion, further discussion. Did you go first, Counsel Johnson, or Counsel Paulson? Counsel Paulson for discussion.
Thank you. I just, in our committee meeting, we had asked for the actual, the buyback amount as part of the lease or the part of their formal proposal, and we did not receive that.
Yeah. I, I, I think we need to, well, first of all, I think, being part of these lease program in the past, we don't really, you wouldn't, they wouldn't know what the actual value of this equipment is at the end of the lease. They wouldn't really know. We'd have to find that out, what the actual amount was. But is, is the language part of it, is the buyback language in the, in the contract, is that, is that what you're asking for, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I see it in, in the, in, this is the same information that was in the committee packet.
Mm-hmm.
And we, I specifically had requested to understand that language and have that added in, and that's not in here. So I don't want to hold this up, but I think it's important we have that, understanding of that document.
Do we have any additional information with respect to that, Britt, or through our, through your office, Colleen?
I'm not aware of any other additional information.
Counsel Baraboo, did you have something?
Well, I thought when we had that discussion, the buyback from, for us was a dollar. I thought that's what, yeah, it's not in writing, but that's what I thought. So they said at the, at the meeting when we discussed that, that once the lease was up, we'd get that equipment for a dollar. So we just, isn't that what we discussed, Britt?
Well, I, I don't think so. Well, I think there's some discussion, but I think the...
Well, you, you don't, at the end of a lease, you normally don't have to keep paying more money. You buy it back for a dollar.
Well, normally, normally, the, at the end of the lease, the company buys it back from you, and then whatever they get for it, they apply it to your new lease and you're worth a discounted price on the new equipment.
But I thought, but I thought we discussed if we want to keep it, we get it for a buck. That's what I thought, without a buyback. Am I wrong on that?
I don't recall that, Counsel Baraboo. However, we'll look, do you have any information about that at all? Pam?
I do not have information on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I, they do it both ways, so.
Well, so to, to go back to the issue that Counsel Paulson brought forward, you're looking for, you're looking for some kind of language in the, in the fire of release option with, with the buyback language. Is that correct?
I, I do think that Chad Buggert had stated he would be able to provide that and get that documentation from Precor, but it is not tonight provided.
I remember that discussion. He did indicate that he would.
Yeah. So that was my only hangup with voting on this in the first place is to understand at the termination of that lease, what is the buyback?
So would it be prudent, go ahead, Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. We could approve it contingent upon getting that contract, and we'd make sure that we have it before we sign up with that language in it. And I can check, I tried calling Brian, but it wasn't available, so.
I, I would rather have the, what was stated by Chad Buggert is that he would get the documentation from Precor, and I would like to have that. So I don't know if this needs to be tabled until then. I don't want to hold it up, but I think it's important we have the documentation.
And also, if, you know, there's, could be an issue with ordering the equipment as well, if it, so I don't know what, what the timeframe would, that would be. But that information is important for us to have. Pardon?
I'm sorry, Mayor. They had a week to get it to us.
Right, no, but I mean, the timeframe about actually purchasing the equipment through Precor, we won't do that until we adopt the resolution. So if you're comfortable and the rest of the elected body is comfortable, we can either approve it contingent or table it. And if we table it, we'll have to bring it back, and we can only formally approve this, a resolution at a special council meeting or a council meeting. So if it's not a special council meeting, it would have to be done two weeks from now. Pardon?
Could we continue the meeting? Tomorrow or to another day, till we get the information?
Uh, is, yeah, is that legal to do? So we could continue this discussion? Recess this part of it?
For a special?
We can finish the rest of the council meeting and then recess it to approve this one item? Okay.
I believe you can do that.
We can do that? Does that, is that acceptable, a council process?
I'm not going to approve this until I have that documentation.
Right, but we, we would recess the council meeting on this particular subject here. We'll finish the rest of the council meeting, but, but we'll recess this piece for, until we get that information and vote on that particular piece as a continuation of this council meeting.
At the, at what, at, at when?
Set a time when we find out.
We'll set a time. So that's kind of like tabling and...
It is, but at least we don't have to call... Well, we would have to call a special meeting just for that one item. Okay, well, then let's, we'll have to do then. We'll see. It's, there is...
Is there a motion that we need to vote on?
Hang on, we got, we got...
Sorry.
I find...
Yeah.
I'll let you continue.
Yeah, hang one, one moment, and maybe we've got some more information here. Apparently Brian has the information. He did forward it once. Apparently we didn't get it. He's going to forward it again. Let's, 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 let's circle back to this particular subject. Hopefully we'll have that information that you requested, Counsel Paulson. And the question about a buyback for $1 is, is, is exactly correct, Counsel Baraboo. So there was a discussion about that?
Yes, that's what Brian said, that we could buy it at the end of the lease for $1, the equipment.
Very good. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll table this discussion until, until, until we get that additional information. But there's still more discussion on this particular item number, item 9.1. Was it L? Counsel, Counsel Freelyb?
I just had a chance to talk to Chad Buggert today on another issue when I stopped at the Y. But in conversation, he did mention the fact that they had already ordered their equipment that was kind of similar to what we would be ordering. And he said now that, you know, COVID is on a downswing to some degree, and people are getting back together, there's all kinds of orders being made. So there was some concern in regard to the timeliness and, and as far as ours going in to be able to get it and set up for the Iron Trail Event Center, Iron Trail Motors Event Center, especially for like hockey season and so on. So I mean, I know we need to have this language in there, but I'm confident that we can do that and approve this contingent upon that, given the fact that we are in kind of a rush mode right now with the grand opening coming within less than a week of time. Granted, we won't have the fitness center up and running at that time, but the sooner we do that, the better will be also with regard to that facility. So, and then I was misunderstanding as well with regard to the buyback. I thought that the buyback meant that Precor buys back that equipment and replaces with upgraded equipment, which would be my preference, to be honest with you. Buying back something for a dollar after you've used it for five years, I don't know that that's really that good of a deal, to be honest with you.
That, that is correct, that if we don't buy it back, you know, they'll take it off our hands, they'll sell it, and then, and then that gets credited back to us. Or the buyback is, we can keep it for a dollar, and then we own the equipment, and we do whatever we want with it. So that would be the buyback option that we would have. So it would go either way.
Supply chain issues that everybody's running into, though, is critical to the facility upstart that we're going to have soon with the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So I think the sooner we move forward with this, the better.
Yeah, I, I concur. I think that Brian is going to be sending us an updated...
I just emailed it to the council.
Okay. Well, let's, let's just stay on this subject then, and take a look at your emails. Did you send it to just Britt? Everybody, Britt. So let's take a look and take a look at that, the buyback option on there, and then maybe we can continue to try to resolve this particular item on the agenda.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Counsel Paulson?
Second paragraph, it says our contract does not mention specifically a $1 buyout option. You can request it be added if need be, providing this transaction is credit approved. Yeah, this sounds like we're still in contract negotiations. I, I don't, I don't understand if, if this email was received on September 9th, why this email was not forwarded to this city council body.
Well, with the language that was forwarded now, is that acceptable to you or not?
There is no real language in there. I mean, do...
What page do you have there, Counsel Paulson?
I'm just on the front, the response for Good Morning Chad in the, in the body of the link, of the email. And what, what, the attachment is an actual sample? It's not city Virginia specific? So, I mean, my preference would be, as Counsel Freelyb, that we actually go forward and have new equipment or have a set value that we would be given. If we're, if we're taking this on as a five-year, 60-month payment, five-year lease, instead of increasing from $122, $22,000, which is in their original, which was their original bid for all of the equipment, if we bought it outright, over the course of 60 months, we're now paying $150,000. It's almost $30,000 with interest over that five-year period of time and not receiving anything for that equipment at the end of that length of time. So I, I guess, our original budget in the MECC, in the, in our actual MECC budget for our, in our fitness equipment, was $75,000. Now we're being asked to spend $150,000 over the course of five years, when our budget was only at $75,000 for that fitness equipment. So I, I just, I felt even at the committee level that there was more discussion to be held, and the reason that I voted to allow this to come forward to the council was number one, because I know there's a timing issue, but number two, because we were going to be provided different documentation that we were not given. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So let me, let me circle back. Do we have a motion on the floor at all with respect to this? Is there a motion and support for discussion, right? Okay, so there's still further discussion? Counsel Johnson?
I have to agree with Counsel Paulson at this point that it's, that they're saying that the contract doesn't end until our legal counsel can look at a contract that includes that language. And I'm not at all comfortable voting contingent upon, because so often things slip through the track when we say contingent upon. So I'm, I, I won't be supporting the, the vote to approve this until the, our legal counsel has read it with the contract buyout option not in there or whatever that clarification is.
Okay, thank you. Oh, so there is a motion on the floor. It moved and supported. So we, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion was to adopt the resolution approving the five-year lease for fitness from Precor for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center and to include the verbiage regarding the buyback option in the lease language. But we don't have the buyback language in there, so we're, we're wanting to include the verbiage regarding the buyback option in the lease language. That's what the motion was. That was moved and supported. We've had discussion. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Beyondich?
No.
Huffy?
Aye.
Baraboo? Freelyb?
Aye.
Paulson?
No.
Motion fails.
Here, I would make a motion to direct our city attorney to work with Chad and Precor to get an accurate contract that we can look at. It's just too much to assume they're going to put in there correctly and hurry up.
So your motion is to, once again, Counsel Johnson, please repeat.
Direct our city attorney and city staff to work with Chad and Precor to get an accurate contract.
Okay.
Includes the buyback option.
That includes the buyback option. Motion by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
All support for discussion.
Support by Counsel Paulson for discussion, further discussion. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to mention and to note for our attorney that under the Precor, I guess their invoice, it, it's saying that, that the items are being sold to Chad Buggert, YMC, Misabe Family, and that might be because of their purchasing power behind that. But the city of Virginia is actually in fact purchasing that. So that needs to be documented on there legally, please. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and supported to direct our city attorney and staff to bring us a copyright of the, of the lease agreement or the Precor issue. So here, item number L, which would be, it's, it's, uh... Looking to, for the contract for the five-year lease option for the fitness from Precor for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center with the verbiage regarding the buyback option and leash, and the information regarding the, the ownership, the actual ownership of the equipment would be in, in that as well. Right, Counsel Paulson? Is that a correct analysis of your motion, Counsel Johnson?
Yes, it is.
You think, is there support for that? Support? Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, it was moved and supported to approve the Special Olympics law enforcement torch run on Chestnut Street on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021 at 1:00 PM.
All moved.
Moved by Counsel Freelyb, been supported by Counsel Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Counsel Johnson?
Heard that we're looking at the closure of the 300 block during, that is one of those possibly the days. So just being aware of that for the folks.
I'm sorry. Hi. What was that?
The closure of the 300 block from the earlier in the meeting is that day.
Yes.
So I just make sure that everybody's coordinating appropriately.
Yeah. Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to direct city staff to reach out to the H R A and to determine the need for a, to request them to determine the need for a temporary drop-off pickup sign to be placed at 1054 Third Street South.
Thank you.
All moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by?
Support.
Counsel Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The city had received a request from the property owner at 502 South Second Avenue for the city to purchase the property at that location. It was moved and supported to receive and file the letter and, from the request for the city to acquire the property at 502 South Second Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it was moved and supported to appoint Counselors Beyondich, Freelyb, and Baraboo to serve on the first round of interviews for the public works director position. Those interviews are being conducted tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM here at the city council chambers, or sorry, city committee room.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Everything else on committee reports?
It was a very good meeting. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to item number 10 on the agenda, which is the commission liaison reports. Does any city council have a liaison report they'd like to provide this evening? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to item 11, department head reports. Does any department head have a report they'd like to give this evening? head have a report they'd like to give this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item 12, which are council reports. Does any city councilor have a report they'd like to provide this evening? Seeing none. We'll move to item 13, which is the adjournment of the meeting. Just a reminder of the recovery program that's up at Alcott Park today in conjunction with our various organizations, including the Police Department. It's from 5:00 to 8:00. We encourage you, if you haven't gone up there, take a swing up there, see what they have to offer. There's a lot of information that may be helpful to you, and all those free games for the kids, and, and some, some food as well. So please encourage you to go up there. I think we're all going up there as soon as we can. I'm famished, so. Okay, nothing else to come before the council this evening. We will stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which is September 28th, 2021, 5:30 PM, at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So just a reminder that our next council meeting will be held at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. We look forward to that. Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work, and be safe out to general public. We stand adjourned. Thank you. Good night.